All right. Good evening, everyone. This is the East Aurora Union Free School District Board of Education meeting for February 7th, 2024. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion to enter executive session to discuss the employment history of five particular employees, two matters made confidential by federal law, and matters relating to a particular corporation. Move by Mrs. Blower. Second. Second by Mr. Cassidy. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried 7-0. Good evening, everyone. We're returning from executive session where we discussed the employment history of five particular employees, two matters made confidential by federal law, and matters relating to a particular corporation. Are there any agenda changes today? All right. Items requiring board action. Item A. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education grant tenure to Melissa Evans, 1.0 FTE teacher. Area of elementary education is detailed in your agenda. May I have a motion? Move by Mrs. Blower. Second by Mr. Blowers. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried 7-0. Congratulations.
I'd just like to give seconds to say congratulations. This is her second tenure. She made the decision. She worked for us and did an excellent job as a special education teacher for many years and said, you know, maybe I would think about a change, so we'll be over to general ed. And she did that. And here she is coming back for her second tenure, and she has done just as good a job, if not even better. And so we're so grateful for your years of service and looking forward to many others to come. So congratulations.
Item B. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education grant tenure to Jessica Lyons, 1.0 FTE director of curriculum and instruction, as detailed in your agenda. I have a motion. Move by Mrs. Daniel. Second. Second by Mrs. Blower. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried 7-0. Congratulations.
I would just like to take a second to congratulate Ms. Lyons for doing a great job as a director of curriculum instruction and professional development. And she has done a great job since she's transitioned as our elementary principal. Before that, she was a chemistry teacher.
Professor Tinding.
Yeah. And I drive her crazy on a regular basis, so I appreciate her level of support so that we can get all of our curriculum initiatives done and done in a really excellent way. So thank you, Jessica.
Item D. No, item C. The superintendent recommends, sorry, I skipped one. The superintendent recommends Board of Education grant tenure to Mark Mabredy, 1.0 FTE assistant superintendent, as detailed in your agenda. I have a motion. Move by Mr. Brunson. Second by Mr. Cassidy. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried 7-0.
Three. We have somebody who's gotten tenure for the second time today. And Mark turned up as our middle school principal, did a fantastic job. And then as he transitioned, he was director of curriculum instruction, technology, building grounds before he moved into the superintendency. He handed off the curriculum instruction piece to Jess, technology, went to my town. And now Mark is the assistant superintendent and doing a fantastic job supporting all of these areas that he has given to him. So very, very grateful for his work and his support.
Item D. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Paige Lamontico to a probationary 1.0 FTE position within the tenure area of education of children with handicapping conditions, general special education, as detailed in your agenda. I have a motion. Move by Mrs. Blower. Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blowers. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Carried 7-0. Congratulations. Thank you so much. I'm so excited to start. We're so happy you're here. Thank you. Item seven. Superintendent's comments.
Yeah, so I'd like to start off with just a quick video about the Be Smart program. The board will be voting later in the agenda. The common resolution that we discussed over the last several months, we're trying to bring this up. So we're just going to do a quick intro video just to kind of be public what the idea is. And basically, it's really around just securing firearms and ammunition in the house. And that's what we're going to talk about in just a second.
Is that just me, or is that...?
Yeah, sure, please do.
Well, Officer Longwood from the East Aurora Middle School, as school resource officer. As part of the Be Smart initiative, always be mindful of firearm safety. Each year, 350 children in America under the age of 18 gain access to a firearm and intentionally harm themselves or someone else. A second statistic we'll be seeing is 4.6 million children in the U.S. live in a household with at least one online fire. We will not have one that anybody behind. As part of the Be Smart initiative, always be mindful of the security of firearms in our homes or our vehicles and to model safe and responsible behavior, whatever, in the presence of firearms. And for parents to ask others if there is a firearm in the house, to be certain that it is secure and to recognize the potential of mental health difficulties that are in our society and how firearms could play a part in that. And also to tell our young people to always be smart about firearms.
Thank you. So I just wanted to share that quick video just to kind of give an overview of what the program is all about. Be Smart, you know, they partner with not only educational organizations but medical associations, partners of health, law enforcement, associations, public safety coalitions. So these relationships are not only through our state but through our country. And the idea is it's just about safe firearm storage. That's what this is all about. Just being aware, making sure that firearms and ammunition are stored safely, as Officer Longwood said, within our homes or within our cars. And just emphasizing that point to our community. Like I said, you'll be voting on a resolution that you just support the general philosophies of the Be Smart program. And then we'll be sending a letter home to parents notifying them to just the idea of Be Smart, what it means, and what they should be aware of as well when it comes to firearms security. Any questions? And then just one other thing I wanted to share is you did receive an educational collaboration update from Bosie's. And so this highlights our students who are in the homeschool program and in other Bosie's-related programs at Baker Road and P-Tech Academy in Tewaville. And so these are some interesting articles about our kids specifically and what they're doing. And then all the great opportunities they have through our Bosie's programs. Just wanted to share that as well. And I think that is it for me.
All right, thank you. Is there, item B, any legislation to come forward?
Oh. Just as an update, not necessarily legislation. New York State has expanded workplace violence, requiring it from the school districts as well. You'll see in tonight's policy that you're voting on the policy for that. We've done our safety audit. We're going to bring it to the safety committee to come up with a workplace violence prevention plan. We are well ahead of the schedule that the state laid out, and we'll have many of our peer districts in doing that. So if you hear about schools now falling under the workplace, New York State's Workplace Violence Prevention Program, we're on it, and you'll be kept in loop with the documents as they come. The first one is the policy we have been voting on.
Thank you very much. Moving on, this board president and board member comments. The policy committee did work remotely on reviewing that policy. And since our last meeting, the finance committee has met twice. And we'll be hearing about that in our presentation. Did you get me? Mrs. Brunson?
Check here. You do it.
I don't think I'm going to wait until we do the captain's.
Okay.
Nothing, Mr. Blowers. I can come back to Mr. Brunson. Mr. Brunson, please.
Well, I'd just like to preface our discussion of the budget later in the meeting by congratulating Mrs. George and Mr. Russ for the excellent job that they've done in tonight's PowerPoint presentation, which we're going to see. We had asked for as detailed information as possible as early as possible. And I know how hard that is, and I appreciate the work that's been done. I think we are in a very good position now as a board to have the kind of information we need, to have an excellent budget in the months to come.
Thank you very much. Next, Mr. Brunson.
Ms. Dinn? Yes, I am going to talk about our safety committee meeting that met December 20th. So obviously, we can come on the meeting. So this is just, we now have another one coming up this Friday. But in that, in that meeting, we just generally talked on all the different schools. Everything seemed to be going well. One of the common themes that was stated by all of the administrators in each of the schools was how great the support has been with the SROs in each of the schools. So that was just one of the common things. There was also a discussion about C-Stack and that training has been completed by all. And it just creates uniformity across schools in terms of if there's any type of emergency situation. So that was one of the things that was discussed. Buildings and ground. There was a, a fire inspection was supposed to be held on January 4th. So I'm sure we're going to get an update on that on Friday. Technology. The second internet was connected from the high school to Parkdale. Or that's, it's connected and it's ongoing. It says the disaster recovery is fully compliant right now. The cameras are still pending. The phones were to be, the installation was to be starting on December 27th at Parkdale. So again, I'm sure we'll get another update. Athletics. They said the transition to winter sports was going well. The SRO has been present, and they had only one injury, dislocated shoulder in the fall that they were, that there was, you know, just a discussion about. And then transportation, there is still a traffic report. So that's, that's just general what happened.
Thank you very much. This is reported.
The only thing I would add, looking, we didn't have a meeting in January, looking back to December was all of the holiday concerts, or the December concerts. I would have to go to quite a few, and I really would like to, I really encourage participation with them as well.
Thank you very much. Moving on, administrator comments. Is there anyone who has comments this evening? Thank you. Yes?
I can, yeah, we have a couple of fun and exciting events coming up at Parkdale that I'd love to share about. Tomorrow is our rescheduled day of play. It's an opportunity for all of our students to participate in several different activities surrounding empathy and inclusion. Since we are a fully inclusive school now with co-talk classrooms at every grade level, our own 8-1-1s within the building, we thought this was a really great opportunity to teach our students a little bit more and have them engage in activities to build those soft skills like empathy and inclusion. So they're going to be doing some read-alouds, participating in some circles, and a couple of craft activities around feelings and individuality. So we're really excited to see how that unfolds. It's our first one to kind of carry the theme of unify from high school to middle school down to Parkdale. Our 100th day of school pending any future snow days is on the day we get back from February break. So we're really excited to see all the kids dress up as little 100-year-olds and their different t-shirts that they make to represent their 100th day. And then we're very excited, we're just in the final stages of planning our literacy night, which will be on March 14th. Every other year, we have scene night or literacy night. So we're super excited to foster some reading within the community, inviting families and to participate in some activities. There will be food trucks out here. So we're very excited for that on March 14th.
Real quick, I just wanted to mention yesterday, our fifth and sixth graders went to the high school to preview Mamma Mia. So it was, it was awesome for both sides because it's really cool for our kids to have that experience of seeing what they could be doing someday when they get to the high school. But at the end, and kudos to Mr. Brunson for orchestrating this whole event. At the end, all the guests and crew and everyone sat around the entire auditorium, and our kids got to ask questions. So it's really neat to hear directly from those kids about their experiences and very interesting questions from our fifth and sixth graders. But it's a great event overall, and it's something we look forward to every year when we're on that preview for both sides, to see our kids go up there and behave so well, and also to see the high schoolers and how they're growing and evolved since they left from this place. So it was a little event for those, Mr. Brunson, for that.
Thanks for sharing.
And that's this weekend.
Perfect segue. The High School Musical is this weekend, so if you don't have any plans, Friday night at 7:00, Saturday night at 7:00, or Sunday at 2:00, please join us. It's going to be a great show, and we appreciate all the coordination of the middle schools, faculty, staff to bring an audience to our performers. We had a performance preview for our, some parents and some seniors from the senior center. So I think we're ready to go. So hopefully you can join us.
Thank you very much. Anything else, Mark?
Winter athletics winding down. Actually, I just walked in from the boys' basketball and cheerleader senior ceremony as they're starting giving us howl as we speak. Girls' basketball senior ceremony tomorrow night. We did have recently, as in 2 o'clock or so yesterday, two of our girl basketball captains have started a little bit of fun in Western New York as they posted a petition to discuss some, what they view as unequal scheduling. And the 26 hours or so that it was posted, I just checked, there's currently 1,192 signatures for this petition. So I wanted, as I've had to do some media interviews today, I thought the board should kind of be aware of that and what that was about. As we want to stand and allow our students to self-advocate for themselves if they have different ideas of, or view something as an injustice or something that's not appropriate in their minds. So that is currently starting in the last 26 or 28 hours or so as well.
I'll just comment, I'll just comment on that. Again, I think they bring up a really important topic. It's about like, it's the space for playoffs for basketball and where they get to play. And it's different for boys and girls. And so I'm very glad they signed their petition because I feel that the petition is right on the mark. And I'm so proud of them for advocating on their behalf and for all the girls that are involved in our athletics program. And yeah, I think it's a very proud moment. And I don't know if this section is very pleased with me, but nonetheless, I am very proud of our students, and I will stand behind them always. And so we'll see how it's resolved, and I think it's going to go in the right direction.
How does one sign that petition?
Target us, while I'm up in your mailbox.
I said, how does one sign that petition? How does the public sign it?
Thank you. It's on change.org. So people have been posting, like when they sign it, they can choose to post it on social media as well. So it's, from what I understand, I'm actually not on much. It's been kind of native surrounds. It was around the last month or so. I'm still at Merck.
Oh, yeah, I said that, yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And there you go, Brunson. Anyone else to speak here?
Okay. We did attend, in January, we attended the DPC meeting with the PTOs from the three schools. And I would say, so Parkdale is, they have so many things on their agenda, but you know, things that stood out was their author visits. And it sounds like they're really enjoying working with everybody at Parkdale. And then they, if you've seen any of the pageable media from the school district, they put out that they, they do lots of mini-grants. And one of the mini-grants they just did was some playground equipment for, I believe it's for the...
It was for pre-k for some indoor recess time, some bro smoker equipment. So things that they can practice balancing on, tossing, the things that can be used inside in the event that they can't go outside. And that's going to be actually a two-year grant. It was kind of large, so they did half this year and were hoping to fund the other back next year.
That's great. Then the middle school is also working on various mini-grants. They're still accepting, I believe they said, they still had some funds to accept some more mini-grants from faculty. And then we have various spring initiatives that they're working on, but their, their goal is to get, to be able to get the families a little more involved like they did in October. They had a really good turnout in October for their student family night also. Yeah. And the high school also has been putting out ramps for some busing and for all different kinds of things. And they're currently working on post. Yeah.
Good job.
My apologies. I did want to let the board know that because of our, the recent snow days, we're actually out. And so we have a remote learning plan. So we dug that out. It's been 20 or 3 years. And so very grateful to the teachers and the principals. We all met, the administrators met, talked about the plan. They got together and pulled it together so that we'll be able to inform parents exactly what it'll look like at Parkdale, the middle, and high school. And so I'll be sending that letter out at the end of this week or first thing on Monday. And so instead of, like, so instead of having to pull days back from our vacation, it's the first day would be the day before Memorial Day weekend, and then we move into April break. We're hoping that we can have these remote days of instruction so that we can avoid having to cancel vacation days in the spring. So just wanted to let you know that we'll be sending that out. We'll get a copy of that, just so we know.
And there's no chance that our governor is going to come back and save an emergency?
That's a great question. So we looked into it, you know, so it's the legal process. So we had to, yes, Mrs. Smith helped us out with that. And so she investigated. There's a process of pulling out of, basically, you have to ask the state to send you the form. And we filled out the form, we attached our form to that form and sent it back to them. But then they made us foil the document. I don't have any idea why. So we had to foil, so now it's 30 days before we get the document, before we can fill it out and send it back in further consideration. So I think they might be delaying so that they don't have to do this. I don't know what the reason for that would be. It's very frustrating, I'll be quite honest, but it is what it is. So we're moving ahead with this because we don't have any kind of guarantee that that's going to come back to us. And one of the things for us, which I think she said we can get around, is that we did not have a travel ban in East Aurora where the other communities around us did, but that prohibited people from coming to work. So she's thinking that we can be covered. And we eventually may get those days back. So yeah, great question.
Sounds very interesting. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? We are moving on to community member comments. First, I would like to remind everyone that over the last few months, we received two emails from us this morning. One from Ms. Thomas and one from Ms. Wood Pearson from U of U B. One from Allison Clay and one from Jen Markin. Did you all receive any of those emails? Yes, thank you very much. Okay, and Mrs. Tornin, you wanted to speak this evening?
Yes, thank you. First, thank you for amending your practices regarding the audit committee so that we're compliant with the law. The December 21st, 2023 audit committee and agenda and minutes were posted. In fact, I attended that meeting and found it very informative. I do hope moving forward that you remember that the law requires you to appoint individuals to this committee each reorganization meeting. EA is certainly number one. The East Aurora Board of Education is distinguished for being the most generous superintendent in all of Western New York, both small and large schools. As a result, EA's half-administry has a compensation package that continues to outpace that of all the others in the region. Late in the agenda, at the December 13th, 2023 board meeting, the board approved a surprisingly delayed contract amendment for its employees retroactive to July 1st, 2023. The superintendent's contract required the board to meet in orders to establish an amendment by May 31st, 2023. But oddly, this actually occurred seven months late. The generous new figures were so late that they were not accurately reflected in the compensation data required to be reported to the NICE setting May, nor were they accurately reported to the public on the revised 2324 budget document, which was mandated to disclose the superintendent's compensation budget for 2024. The revised compensation figures would have remained a secret had I not requested a copy of the amendment document, since it was not then nor now attached to the agenda and as per required in open meetings law. The December 2023 amendment approved a base salary increase of approximately $10,000, yielding the top ranking salary of $244,140. Additionally, an ample new sick leave retirement benefit of $103,760 was added onto an already lavish retirement package. And five questions. Why was this package negotiated seven months after it was contractually required to be completed and after taxpayers voted on a 2324 budget? Was the delay intended to hide the actual administrative compensation from the public because it was never posted on the agenda? Why was this amendment negotiated during the fiscal year when EA exploited to lose 3.1 million in stimulus funds, which were often neglected fully spent on recurring expenses and another $181,000 in state aid? Why is the contract amendment so extravagant when in December 2023 decision from the state education commissioner and a January 2024 release of state controllers spotted revealed that compliance with education law and general municipal law as well as necessary board policy updates did not occur? How does the board justify to EA taxpayers the additional compensation decisions made in December? How does the board plan to correct, modify, and hold accountable the individual at the helm during the recent decisions of the state education commissioner and state controller? The audit findings of the state controller are not available for public access on the online agenda for tonight's board meeting. However, we found the link off the state website. When the board began posting for the public to view all documents before the board at a public board meeting, as is required by open meetings law 103-1. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. I would like to thank the superintendent for his patience in the evaluation process, which was much delayed by a number of other things that we were working on in the district. And we, we have plans to be more efficient next year. As far as the federal funds go, Mrs. Tornin, stay tuned for a budget presentation. I'm sure you'll be impressed with the work that the superintendent and our school business officials have done to move us off those federal funds. And as far as I know, the audit findings are in draft form and not ready for public viewing. So I'm not sure how they're out there yet. But we're still waiting for the final version of that document. Okay, anyone else? Moving on to reports of discussion items. Item A. We are on the social studies curriculum review. Bye, thank you, everybody. Bye, thank you.
Okay, so social studies is the only subject up this year. And we have our reps from each of our committees here to present to you. I think you have a copy of it yourselves, right? Okay. I will start with Parkdale. Bridgette Converse is going to present on page four, social studies, Parkdale. Jan Anthon, you have a new 5-8 social study. Janice Stilbraker will present on the high school social studies department.
Hello, everyone, everybody. I'm going to present the page four, our social studies presentation. So to start off, this is my articulation team. Sue Mchekki, which is formerly Sue Austin, which you probably all know her by Sue Austin. She recently got married. Myself, Kristi Davis, Adam Parsons, I don't care about. So we meet pretty much about once a month after we've met with our DCIC group. We like to think that we're awesome. Some of the things that we do in each grade level. Kindergarten pretty much does the holidays around the world. They do this beautiful kings and queens day. They all dress up, they have a little ball at Parkdale. And first grade, this year, we started a new tradition of holidays around the world, which the kids really enjoy. We each did a different country. And they did some crafts. They, we made suitcases so they could make all the things that they made. They put them in little travel suitcases to take home. Our main areas of instruction is more about them, like them as citizens. And we do some things about just being a good citizen and just being part of your community, which is very appropriate. just being a good citizen and just being part of your community, which is very appropriate. Second grade does twelve days of kindness right before Christmas, and they do an annual food cruise ride. They also do caroling and absolute care this year. They did a canned drive, which raised, I want to say, just shy of maybe around fifteen-hundred dollars. And they had kids volunteer, parents volunteer, and they were in a little truck like the Saturday before we went on Christmas break. So that was something new that they started this year. Third grade, they do weekly cross-aligned things along a lot with their reading. They do a country research project with the kids. And then fourth grade, they do make salt maps, they do some small projects, and a lot of their curriculum is geared around their state education or history. So they do a lot of walking field trips here in East Aurora. Our curriculum highlights, everything's grade level appropriate. We have lots of different videos about activities we use through Brain Pop Junior and just a lot of different things, some things that are heard just about the teaching of a teacher. We don't, all grade levels don't have like a textbook because it wouldn't be really appropriate. A lot of hands-on activities. We do recognize all of those holidays throughout the year. And some of the field trips that we go on, kindergarten goes to the fire station, fourth grade goes to the Miller Fillmore House, kindergarten, or second grade goes to the private table at Erie County Fairgrounds, first grade does the Buffalo Zoo, and K and one does the farmer's market here in town. And there's a mishmash of some other grade levels that do those last ones, but the fourth grade does go to Little Bright Schoolhouse since we're never again. All right. And some successes that we have in social studies, we use Classic News, which is great for current events, the morning announcements we hear about SCL at the end of the day. We embrace all the different holidays. We have a Veterans Day assembly where the kids make thank you cards. We also make family time sake cards for some of the nursing homes and the veterans here in town. A lot of teacher-created supplemental resources and the fourth grade walking field trips that are throughout East Aurora for the New York State history. And then these are just some photos. I'm going to run over here. So this is, the little suitcases are first graders made when they travel around the world for the different holidays. This is the food canned drive in second grade. This is the kindergarten at the firehouse. This is the canned drive. This was a map that one of the kids made in fourth grade, and this is the third grade, just kids in action in the classroom. A lot of hands-on in social studies. And then areas of need, I think our one wish is that we just had more time to teach social studies. It's just a really packed schedule with many of the reading and math and just trying to think about land science. And then we would like to purchase some just updated materials for all different grade levels in the building, and just some planning time, maybe over the summer, to just sit down with your, when things aren't as, it's so jam-packed, just to work on our curriculum maps and just look at some projects that we might want to start with, that the kids next fall. And then just some recommendations, some of the classrooms need some wall maps, a few classrooms need some globes. We would like to purchase some trade books for each grade level, possibly just trying to look at that schedule of Parkdale, try to incorporate some more instructional time. And then just, we want to have that planning time to leave some consistency throughout the building page four with social studies, so that we're moving to the curriculum hours that we're looking for maybe over the summer. And I think we're up to, Mr.?
Can we ask questions?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
I had a question about the materials David said that you needed, materials for all grade levels. Is that, as being on the textbook committee, is that something, supplies that we're going to be putting on?
No, usually supplies, and I think the middle school wants some supplies too. Either, like, either Miss Katoan or I'll tell her, Mr. Brown and I will figure out what budget set would come from, but it's not, you know, like, any type of textbook review, it's just a different supply line.
Okay, that's awesome, thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Excuse me, I'm Dan Atton. I've been in fifth grade for nine years now, primarily as a social studies teacher. But last year we restructured and there's now three of us who teach both social studies and ELA. So I'm kind of like the go-to person for my fifth grade colleagues, and this is my first year as a DCIC coordinator for middle school social studies. In grade five, I can speak a little bit more to it. We say the Western Hemisphere. Our textbook is getting old, but I've done a lot of searching, and they really don't make many textbooks for K to five. And when you call these people and say you are looking for one grade level, they don't want to talk to you. Which brings me to six, seven, and eight. Six, seven, and eight, in the last curriculum review five years ago, received new textbooks. So they are still in very good shape, and those teachers and the kids, they don't need any replacements, they're happy with what they have. And so Mrs. Steinbrenner is teaching about the Eastern Hemisphere. That's just a copy of her textbook out there, and she is very competitive. This is Hopcha, teaches seventh grade history, and Miss Fazio teaches one section and then flip-flop for grade eight. Again, they, that same, the same company, they have a textbook for that they're very happy with. It also has an online component too that, so the kids, the textbooks for most were at State, in, you know, in the school, and the kids didn't access the textbook online at home. Grade eight is just, you know, History of the U.S. and New York State, Part Two, same textbook for both. So they just split those up. Needs and recommendations, some summer hours to align our curriculum both horizontally and vertically, especially at fifth grade, it's important because this year we had, we had a new teacher as the ELA social studies person, so just having time to talk with, you know, different staff is very helpful. Except for seventh grade, Mrs. Hopcha has asked for a set of classroom analysis, so we're currently looking for those. At all grade levels, we do need, some of our maps and globes are sort of, they're getting old, and so we're going to need some replacements there. And then for the online subscriptions, the Kids Discovery Magazine, Mrs. Steinbrenner currently receives that at sixth grade. It is something we looked at as a five-to-eight group, and so we are going to look into whether we can get like a site license for five through eight, because there are parts of that program, online program, that will benefit all of us. Junior's Classic Magazine is currently being purchased and recommended to be purchased next year, and the same with the Upfront Magazine for seventh through eighth grade. Any questions? Sure.
I'm curious.
Sure.
How often do, like, globes and maps have to be, need to be replaced? Or do you use the old ones as, then, oh, in nineteen fifty-five, this is what, so is that used as like a visual for that?
No, no, I'm just strictly referring to some of them are, you know, some of the maps, pulled-out maps and things like that are literally crumbling, just need replacement. So I'm not looking for anything beyond that. But also with the addition of two social studies teachers at the fifth grade level, I've given them things and they've ordered things, but maps and globes especially can be kind of expensive. So just need a few more to, for the teachers especially.
Fair question. Substitution.
Yeah, if any country are, you know, added and things like that, some kids will look at a globe and say, why is this, why is this country not on this globe? It's thirty years ago.
Hi, I'm Jim Stonebreaker. I'm a representative of the social studies department at the high school. This is my twenty-second year at the high school teaching social studies, so I'm going to kind of go through kind of the nuts and bolts of what we have. This is just kind of an overview of the ninth through twelfth curriculum. Ninth grade, basically you have two options, Global One or Global Cultures One, which leads into AP World. In tenth grade, you have Global Two, or you have AP World, which is Part Two of the GLA, the Global Leadership Academy, which I'll talk about in a second, or you can take AP Euro. Eleven is very simple, U.S. History and Government or AP U.S. History, and then twelfth grade is Gov. and Econ. AP Gov. and AP Econ. This next, I don't know if you guys can see all of this, this is a listing of all of our courses. Towards the bottom are our electives, which are still very popular, electives that we offer, military history, sociology, psychology, history of EA, film, Holocaust Studies, and street laws on there, but we haven't really been offering that recently, so that's something that's kind of archived in our catalog that hasn't been as popular in the past. The photos you can see through this whole, from my slide, are going to be basically from the Community Service Day, which I'll get to in a second, I'll talk a little bit about those. Our curriculum highlights, we've gone through everything to, everything aligns now with the New York State social studies framework. The previous exams have just changed, we've aligned everything to those new exams. The curriculum mapping, we just started, so we've been working on that process, which is a whole new software program that most of my department is off the speed with, and we're kind of getting through it. Our highlights, our clubs that we offer, Model UN Debate Club, the GLA, which I have another slide on that, I'll go through in a second. And then our biggest thing we've been working on is civic literacy, and that's a seal that students can get on their diploma. And I'll have a slide for that to kind of explain these Community Service Days for you. The GLA Academy is basically a two-year course study, which is basically going to incorporate English, social studies, and art, and that's something they're going to go through in ninth and tenth grade. That culminates in an AP World exam that can give them college credit, and a lot of these students are going to basically be more social sciences inclined, a lot of them go into that. The SEAL Civic Readiness is something that's new, that just came out in recent years. We've been kind of just kind of diving into it. It's a little complicated to go through, but this is a different pathway kids can basically achieve to get a SEAL on their diploma. By twenty-twenty-six, graduating class of twenty-twenty-six, all of them will be able to be eligible for the SEAL as long as they pass full previous exams. So that is something that our Community Service Day that we've been doing is basically kind of leading to that. Here are some pictures at the Town Historian, there's some other ones at the, I can't remember which one that was at. I can't remember what the last one is, but the first three there are going to be at the Town Historian. Our needs and recommendations, we're definitely going to have to assemble the textbook committee. We're going to need some new textbooks. A lot of them are not going to be redditioned, so we're going to have to kind of open the books on that. Flexible seating for classrooms, some teachers want some flexible seating, and then there's some online textbook subscriptions that are going to have to be new. That is something that, a lot of them have started five to seven years from the last cycle, they've kind of come to that new degree. That's everything, any questions? Yeah.
I'm just wondering, in terms of your APs and the number of students, have you had a lot of students participating in the various AP World?
Oh, yeah. AP World, AP Euro, AP U.S. are very, very popular. Econ has two sections, AP Econ has two sections, so they've all been very, very popular. Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Really had you, I don't know. The first session I got is the Capital Facilities meeting. Yeah. Cheers. I'm sorry. Oh, yes.
Yes, we, so.
Thanks. All right, so we had a Capital Facilities meeting recently, and I wanted to share a, I can pass it down each to you, and it's the budget review combined, so everyone can get one of these. And I'll wait until, we'll do this one at the end. First, I'll talk about some of the things that have been going on recently. Phase two, we'll be going to SED in, State Education Department in June. We hope to do the bidding a year from January, a year from this past January for that phase. Hopefully, phase two, we'll go to SED, and we can do the bidding in January, keeping in mind, right now, the SED times have been increasing, so we're hoping we'll get the review back in time to do bidding next January. Middle school domestic water system, the pumps are in phase one work, and I know, because that was like a surprise, and we did not anticipate having to do the domestic water system here. We'll be able to put that within phase one, keeping in mind, as I said at the choir meeting, that this is just the first step. There will have to be future work done on our water system here. What we're currently doing is going to solve the current issues, solve the current problem, and it will help when we have to do future work on this building. They, all the materials for that project is here, and the whole thing should be completed in a month, and the outside work should be done kind of at this time. The high school interior drainage scoping will now be eligible for building aid. We did not anticipate that, that was something we thought we were going to have to pay for, but now we're getting building aid for that. The exterior high school scoping project, it was discovered that the drains under the parking lot, after they were scoped, two of the drainage are blocked, and we're not going to do anything to them just yet because in phase two, we're going to be redoing that parking lot, so at that time, that is when we will fix those and unclog those two drains. That's the main entrance one? Main entrance parking lot? Yes, yeah. High school, I was thinking, what's the main entrance? High school gym doors, we're still waiting on the delivery. This is like the never-ending, where are our high school gym doors? Still waiting on that, probably, and that is in quotes, summer. We're hoping for April, but there are so many, so probably it's going to have to be done in the summer. Sixty percent of our budget for phase one will be completed by early April. Capital outlay for twenty-three, twenty-four is currently out to bid, and all the bids are going to be due by the thirteenth, so next week. Just to remind you, that's the Parkdale phones and the parking lots. The capital outlay project for twenty-four, twenty-five, that has not definitively been decided, some things that have been discussed are makeshift work at the high school, that does a lot of makeshift work at high school, maybe still done, so that may have to be a multi-year project. The middle school needs some makeshift work, and we also talked about generators, and we haven't decided that yet. There's been no talk this year at all about raising the capital outlay like they did the last two years, pretty isn't a budget, so pretty much it's going to still be at the hundred thousand dollars, unfortunately. And as far as, and I'm going to share this in a few minutes, the bid summary for phase one, we had seven contracts, twenty-seven bids, twenty-six bids, I'm sorry, and the numbers came in for under budget. So now everyone has the piece of paper in front of them, and you can see phase one and phase two. Joanne and Brian, jump in at any time. You can see the project budget, the soft costs and total construction costs, and as you can see right now, we are coming under budget for phase one, and that includes what we are doing with the middle school drainage issue. So that is incredibly great news. And all the alternates. And all the alternates. And all the alternates for phase one. That's fantastic.
And Mrs. Ollinger, just a point of reference, this was compiled by Buffalo Construction?
Yes, yep, this came back from Buffalo Construction, so they presented these numbers to us, not something that they, that we constructed, they did this, and they gave this to us at the last Capital Facilities meeting. So right now, it says we are under budget by four-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand seven-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. So that being said, hopefully, if we stay under budget for the phase two, we'll be able to look at some of the alternate projects that we have discussed and potentially be able to undo some of those.
Did they comment on why is it coming in? Is it because when we initially did this, you know, just the economy was in a different place and now we're?
It's the timing. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Because of the way. Because of January, December, January is when we asked for bids, and I guess a lot of it has to do with the timing of the year, which is why we really want to make sure for phase two, we submit, have everyone give their bids next January, so.
So it's not, they didn't say it's anything related to like sort of the cost of things coming down in terms of?
No, unfortunately, no.
Yeah, no, he's just curious what it was.
Yeah.
Prepare for the worst and you hope for the best, and you were lucky to get the best.
Right.
Part of it is too, that the Buffalo Construction works very hard in putting it out to as many vendors as they possibly can and asking them to come in to bid. And so sometimes, it depends on the time of the year, that certain projects look more attractive for the crews than they need to be for. And so we, January date is usually pretty good because what they're doing is, okay, we need work for the summer, so we're going to bid this out, right? And so it just all kind of came together. What's also very positive about this, they also have a contingency built in at four-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars. So that's for underseeds or things like that, and bulges, so there's that four-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, plus it came in four-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand under budget, and then we're also able to include the plumbing, the doors.
And the timing, and one of the things with the timing is now other school districts are letting their bids, and a school district had pushed their bid date out further, so ours was in front of theirs, which drums up business and trying to fill the generator and.
I think we had 26 bids.
That's huge.
That's a lot. Sometimes we only had one bid, actually. You know, and then of course you got it priced, so having this many was really, really good.
And that all ties back to the timing of our vote, right?
Yes.
The recommendations we were getting in order to get that December voting was so that we could be going out to get it at the optimal time and some sort of that.
So many things with Capitol projects have to do with the timing. When you do the vote, the vote, when you get your design done, so that it can be put into SED, get the approval from SED, which is a, we don't know, it's like brushing the left, but that timeframe is going to be, so that we can hit the bidding market at the right time. That's why, again, as you said, the timing is so, it is so important. Some people, when we first, they did this, we had to bid in December, when it was July in December, there's a reason why we're doing these things at the time that we're doing that. And, and so we really, really lucked out by the fact that we are so under budget, which again, hopefully if there's no unforeseen issues with phase two, it potentially could allow us to do some of the contingencies that we, that we need to do.
There is this much luck, and it's all about all of the people involved in the project, managing their pieces efficiently.
Yes.
Right, so we got, we got very lucky, and other districts have been unlucky, some of it's SED. The community needs to recognize this is because the right people are in the room doing that. All the jobs that are involved in a massive project like this.
I cannot say enough about Young and Wright, how amazing they have done with everything.
It's everybody. It's our folks, it's Young and Wright, Buffalo Construction, it's the specific team.
You'll remember, I often mentioned how long SED is taking for their reviews, and that's why I mentioned that, because it all comes back to when we then can go out to bid, and so much of that is based on the timing of SED.
Just recently, we've probably met six times in the last few weeks, two, three weeks to, to tide again at the second bids. So all the decisions around colors and materials and all those things that can be made, there's thousands of decisions. And so Young and Wright has done a very nice job along, Joey Romania is from Buffalo Construction, he put this document together, which I think is really, really great, because it's very straightforward, it's easy to understand, a lot of numbers here, but you can follow, you can follow the logic. And so it's kind of all of them working together, and the timing of the budget is critical. So, so they set an agenda for us, and the idea is to keep that agenda that allows us to do bids in that time. So we just go ahead and move forward.
We have a meeting next week, and then at the March 6 meeting, Young and Wright and Buffalo Construction will be here to give a little presentation and then answer any further questions than anyone might have concerning phase one or phase two.
If you join us next month, we'll have more information on phase two.
Yes.
Thank you. For those who don't know, the UCFSE is?
State Education Department. Yes, they're the ones who go through and read all of the designs and all of other things, and what it takes to.
Which is why they have to approve, or we can't do anything else.
And they issue our, our bid information.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Seniors, thank you for being here. You're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, but you may leave if you would like.
Moving on to item C. Yes, reports on discussion items, uh, there, this is topics.
Um, yes, since we had a meeting.
Yeah.
On our last scheduled board meeting, I have two months of reports, but if it is okay with the board, I would just like to report on the most current month.
I have no question, no problem here. Anyone have any questions about November that we can tie into some of our?
Okay, so as of December 31st, in our general fund, we had approximately $18.4 million in the bank, and that ties to, everything ties out, it ties to our cash flow, our cash flow should be fine through the summer. The majority of our taxes have been collected. What's left is a taxes receivable, about $250,000. Were made whole by the county, and I can't remember if that's in March or in April, I can't remember when it was April, I just don't know right now. We had expended approximately 40% of our budget, which is right on target, what you would think we would be doing, and received approximately 71% of our budget. Again, the cafeteria revenues are exceeding expenditures. Again, I just always caution that with cafeteria, there's always timing issues with revenues and expenditures. Right now, as of the end of December, we're showing 43K to the good. The federal funds, everything's coming in, everything's running as planned. Actually, Mrs. Marinaccio, myself and Erin Jamison have a, our targeted review for the stimulus funds tomorrow, with the state, every single district in the state of New York, either has to have a targeted review, a desk review, or a, there's another one, like an in-person review. Ours is a targeted review. All our information has been uploaded. I believe everything we've uploaded is in good shape. Tomorrow we meet with the state, they say, oops, we don't quite understand this, could you give us more information, or great job, I have more to record on that. Mrs. Marinaccio at our next meeting. And we're right on target with all our stimulus funds. Two of the three grants, we've received all of the money. The third grant runs out in September. One is the Capitol Outlay, which is the phone project at Parkdale, and the paving project at Parkdale. We've expended very little money on that so far, as of December, about $1,600, and those are some of the soft costs that we spend in every project. And out of the $22 million project that Mrs. Oldwiler was just reporting on, we've spent a little under $400,000 to date. And the update I had from Mr. Gancy on how we're going to borrow the money for the project, I've had several conversations with him, what he was thinking, what I was thinking, we're all on the same page right now. Since we have the building permits for phase one of the project, that's all the money we can borrow so far. So about half of the money we will borrow in June of '24. We will probably go to bands at that time, and then June of '25, we will go to bonds, borrow the rest of the money, roll the bands into the bonds, and then over. And that's all I have. Mr. Mangredi has our grid. I was like, she had questions? I'm sorry, I didn't ask. No, I didn't hear any questions, anyone have new questions? Thank you for the information.
As you'll see, as the grid is coming around, you know, we're trying to do a snapshot of where we are at this point in time, so really the February 24 column is where you're going to look at. Salaries are trending slightly over budget, but I'm going to talk about, no, I'll talk about it now. That is because of us bringing in some of these special ed services from BOSIs and also hiring our own OTs. That money is going to be offset by the BOSIs line and also the contractual line. Those adjustments are starting to come in, but they've not fully been realized yet. So it's a bit of a little bit of a plan over budget, because we know there's a little bit of Robin Peter, pay Paul. So don't worry so much that that's, that's trending high. Everything else you're going to see is trending in the right direction, benefits, that's a conservative estimate, we'll get another deal. We'll know a lot more in the next grid, or the second March grid, I should say. But benefits are coming in under budget, supplies, contractual, again, you'll see contractual growing, we believe that's going to go even further. Tuition, textbooks off our library tuitions, $50,000 under budget, a lot of that was tuition that we budgeted to pay but don't have to pay, BOSIs and transportation. So in terms of what we spend, we're currently about $210,000. We have that other $150,000 for the Capitol Outlay that Mrs. Oldwiler just talked about that didn't pass, but we budgeted it as if it was going to pass, so we're about $360,000 to the grid in terms of expenditures. Revenue again is also trending strong, property tax is trending slightly positive, it's going to be a negligible number, but it's moving the right way. The next three numbers are going to be conservative, but also looking good. State aid looks to be coming in stronger than we expected. There's a lot in the news right now about state aid and the governor and the rest of that. Just as a reminder, that's all for next year's budget, so all of those news stories come out after this grid. State ad trends to be coming in higher than anticipated. Your county sales tax coming in stronger than we anticipated. Other revenue is a variety of sources, mostly billing back for non-hubs, health, welfare, things of that. A big chunk of that number though is interest, and so it just talks about the importance of having money in the bank because of interest. So long story short, at the end of the day, revenue is coming in about $279,000 over budget. The expenditures are coming in $360,000 under budget, so that's going to bring us into about $639,000 to the good. Now, as, as, not to steal his thunder, but Mr. Brunson will remind us, 568 of that is spoken for in the appropriated fund balance. Obviously, you can work for that number as a board how you want to. But the good news overall is, you know, it, we started this grid because of unexpected revenue shortcomings or expenditures. What we're saying is, at this point, if we roll the appropriate fund balance over, we're within about $100,000 of the superintendent's plan for the school year, and the budget you approved aligning. $100,000 personally is a lot of money, but in the scope of a $42 million budget, it shows we're running a very lean budget. And our anticipated thought is it's going to trend only more positive, not bizarrely positive, but unless something totally unforeseen happens, we'll have a sliver, a very thin pillow. You would enjoy speaking on it, but it'll be there financially. The other thing, just because it was put there, and Mrs. George just mentioned it, the COVID fund received and spent, you're going to see, we're still on track for that 300, I'm sorry, 3.1 million. We're at 2.9 and change, there's just that last one that's just chasing in. Bumping back up a tiny bit, just the FEMA funding, I know that was an issue, was now complete. The one was ultimately denied, despite whatever, and the other one was mostly approved, but they pulled one thing back. So our FEMA reimbursements are as good as they're going to be, and it, you know, went from there. Personnel, we decided we're going to just kind of update personnel periodically through the year, so that's going to be on the back of your page. You're going to see that the numbers hold strong with where they were from September. I will note, you know, we have 180 FTEs in terms of the staffing, that 17.5 is not FTEs, that's a typo, don't forget about that, that's 17.5. So that really comes five, five, five classes equal a person, so it's about three and a half people worth of six assignments, if that makes sense. So getting those classes in there, most of them are in special ed, for 151,000 continues to be a good way to do business. You're going to see a significant jump in teacher aides, but not really. The asterisk from September was that we had a significant, we started the school year off with a significant number of unfilled positions, so we're right where we thought we would be. I will say, it is an area of turnover, an area of concern, an area of focus, so I do ask for consideration of budget time, what we can do to provide some stability there. But don't look at that, you know, big jump and say, oh my goodness, what happened? What happened was, we hired the people we said we were going to hire. And it went from there. And then just the multi-year rollout of the fund balance is on the bottom for you there. Any other questions?
Questions or comments? I just want to congratulate the business office on doing such a successful job of receiving those COVID funds. I think that has just happened automatically.
That's my FEMA.
And I have to, I can't take all the credit, Mrs. Marinaccio and Erin, without them and working as a team, it would have been a, truly a heavy lift for one person.
Questions or comments? Thank you very much for the information. Moving on to item Z, the volunteer fireman and ambulance, fireman, firefighters? And ambulance workers tax deductible report.
Okay, the roof property laws was adjusted by the governor back in December, on December 9th, 2022, to allow government bodies to pass resolutions, whether they want to or not want to adopt an exemption for volunteer firefighters and EMTs. There's no, it's open-ended, unlike the veterans exemption, where it had to be done and it was very rushed. This is open-ended, there's no, you have to do it by a society, but in order to reach the next tax cycle of any year, it has to be done by March 1st in order for it to flow through. What we have found, that it has to be a residential property, where you live, you have to be a volunteer, the same taxing jurisdiction where you live, up to 10% of your assessed value for a maximum of $3,000. Trying to figure out the number of properties in the east or our boundaries, there's no easy way to do that. You would have to call every volunteer fire hall within our district and then rely on them telling us. So what we did find out is the town did pass a resolution for this, and they've already started the process for the town taxes. So in a year, we'll have much better information to know how many properties it would impact for the school district taxes. We still have to go through the same process, they have to actually put in an application to the school district to get the exemption, we have to come up with a process to do that if we decide to adopt. It's up to the taxing jurisdiction to come up with what they deem as a minimum amount of service before they get the exemption, and it's anywhere between three and five years. So we can pick three, four, or five. The property has to be owned by the volunteer, it can't be a rental property, they have to own the property and pay taxes there. The primary resident, residence of the volunteer has to be located within the jurisdiction. And there is a caveat that they get a lifetime exemption if they have served for 20 years or more. And that's about all there really is.
Thank you. I'm thinking of Jacity for sharing information with the board ahead of time from other districts in town. Anyone have comments or questions at this point? Sounds like we have some time to review and discuss and wait for more information.
Just had a question, they kept saying different individual. If you have, I know some families have a husband and a wife in the prior departments. Right, but it's only one property, so you get the exemption on the property, not the person. So, okay, so the person makes the property eligible for the exemption. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, there's a couple of things. One is that, can you read it, I mean, can you rule the letters set up in the company? That part of the scene there. I don't really know how you're going to track how long the firefighters and the first responders, whatever, how much service credit they have, it's been, it's going to be interesting to see who keeps track of that. And the other thing I go to when I'm thinking about it, when you're elected to the school board, we're here to represent the school and what benefits this school and what doesn't. See a lot of things tonight that benefit the school district. A couple of comments we're getting with the budget. A couple of comments we get in the budget cycle. I don't know how this benefits our kids, the taxpayers of this school district. That's a, yeah, I'm fighting that a little bit because responsibility to do what's right for which district. And this may be what's right, I just haven't seen it binded yet. But even having said that, I'd like more information on how they do track the service time. So if you go in that direction, it is a guess, though, for making sure everybody's counted, does it benefit those who receive, we're certainly not going to extend benefits to those that don't qualify immediately, that's why I ended this.
Thank you for sharing. Yeah, this is another one of those tricky ones where I think people are deserving of tax breaks that maybe could happen at the state level instead of redistributing it within our community.
Yeah, and then I was just going to say, you know, sort of following up with what Mr. Lowers said, it's a little ambiguous to actually read through the language of the law, so we're really going to have to spend that time. Because one of the things I can note is that there's a lifetime for the surviving or the unmarried spouse of a deceased volunteer. So, you know, you get into like how you even define all that and, you know, how does this all play out as it moves forward? So it'll be interesting to see how, what information we get from the town moving forward to see if we have these numbers and stuff. And that was interesting, though. I'm not sure, I think Ryan or somebody gave us at our actual 18th meeting, a list of local schools who have or have not approved, your county did not approve this.
Yes, that was, whenever I did, I put out like a straw poll to all my counterparts, and it's all over the board. Who has done it? Who hasn't done it? Who's considering doing it?
Other questions or comments at this point?
The only reason I brought that up is I'd be curious to know why, as a board, they did not. Are they having the same concerns that we're having?
I would say that as many things happen, the biggest concern is the redistribution of taxes. As Mr. Lowers said, that's like really not the job of the board, that it should happen at the state level, but we push that down, because, but I'm saying, nobody wants to have to deal with it. And so, so what we do is the taxpayers, it's certain people who see or then pass to other taxpayers in the district. And so, again, as you're saying, that's a good question.
That's one of the reasons we need more data. How much?
Yeah, there's three higher districts that cut that within our school district. So, yeah, to understand better, what are the numbers?
The records keeping is a really big question, right? How far back will the records go?
I don't know. And I don't know how volunteer companies keep records because they're volunteers. There are no payroll records, there are no, I don't know.
And a lifetime benefit is, you know, not something that you can take like. Other comments or questions? Can I just?
Something for experience?
Mrs. Horn, I prefer we keep it to the regular process of the meeting, if you don't mind. Feel free to.
If you're already got it, keep it.
Thank you very much. Share it with me back after.
Okay.
Thank you. We have time, so let's continue to keep it on the agenda or we'll put on the agenda the future meeting when we have some information. Thank you very much. Moving on to item K, the state company report.
Yeah, it's in your packet. It is, as Mrs. Horn said, it is out on the state website, so it is out there. It is public information and anybody can have access to it. We don't really need to do anything on, we do have to develop a, sorry, what's coming?
So many things running through my head.
A corrective action plan. We do have to create a corrective action plan, and we are in the process of doing that, and we'll have it for the March 1st.
Thank you very much for your questions and comments.
Maybe this is a dumb question, though. Why did our own auditors, who go through our stuff every year, not?
It's actually the way the state auditor wrote this report. It's quite, in my opinion, disingenuous. I think the language is inflammatory because it's not that we did anything wrong, but sometimes they were looking for a piece of paper and we could not produce the piece of paper. And it is really a good audit report. Are there always ways to improve? Absolutely. And I had many, many meetings, not only me, board members, Mr. Ross, staff with the state auditor, and they were like, you know, who doesn't want to improve? And I'm like, yeah, who doesn't want to improve? And we're actually working on a process so that that, not being able to find documentation going back five, 10 years, when you're in the audit period, on putting it electronically right in with all the purchasing requisitions. So we're working on a process with our software system so that when somebody goes out and gets a quote, that document is put right in the requisition so that it's easier to find.
So I'll just say this. So we met with the auditors after it was done, and so much of what they're stating is not required, it's suggestion. And so, because if this is what they believe will be best practice, or maybe a better practice than what we're using right now. So we had a lot of conversations around then, why do you state it the way you do? You shouldn't be using language that is correct. If you're actually not using language that is actually identifying the issues, you are using inflammatory language for whatever reason you're choosing to do so, I'm not sure. But we had that conversation because what they are suggesting, in most cases, is not required. It is just their suggestion. We have numerous auditors that are evaluating what we're doing. They have different opinions. And so, I would say that to take it with a grain of salt to some degree because much of what they're saying is not necessary. Just what they maybe prefer or what they're looking to say at that particular point.
We had more choice discussions, even the framing of the, if you read through the entire thing, the lead sentence may not be the meat of it. The further down in the paragraph is the, well, we recommend it is, right? But the headline may be a little inflammatory. Yes, but we got to have the meeting with them in draft form when we're in there. They do their job. But they were pleasant to work with. They were pleasant to work with. They spoke highly of the process and the business officials and the department and everyone's responsiveness, and they give us best practice tips, and on we go.
It's their job to find places that can be improved. You know, and it doesn't mean that what was done was illegal or wrong or fraudulent or anything along those lines. It just means that from their point of view, this is an area where some improvement can occur, you know? And our other auditors, heaven knows we have plenty of auditors of all kinds who look at our work regularly, they may have a different perspective with regard to what they're looking at, you know? They may, some of them may be looking, are we following the law? You know, whereas the controller feels it's essential to make suggestions for improvement. Two completely points, different points of view. And so I think we've always, every time we've had a controller's audit, there's been this list of things that they identify as ways to improve. And when we've done the corrective action plan, it has resulted in a better functioning district by making those things. But I don't think we should use this one audit as some kind of judgmental statement about the way things are run. It's not intended to be that. It is intended as an aid in improving the efficiency of the district.
Yep, as Mr. Murray said, and that was our conversation once around then. And they were very, they were very nice to work with, very pleasant. And so when we had those conversations, that's kind of what it was. It's about, oh, it's ways to improve, some question about it. And that's what they were discussing. But sometimes the words on the paper don't necessarily match that conversation.
Well, I mean, in a district, any district, you've got lots of different people involved in the purchasing process, you know? And so maybe person X made three or four phone calls and got all kinds of quotes and then submitted the low quote as required, but didn't they write all that down?
Correct, that's exactly what happened.
Did they clip it to the purchase order?
We followed all those processes and procedures, but when it's a verbal quote and you didn't document it, how can I show it to the auditor? So we're trying to improve so that we document those types of things. There's not one person in this district that does not always have the district's best interest at heart.
The follow-up, your question too, and the external auditors coming in is doing samples. Now we just take 50,000 bills will be paid. Everybody's like, you just grab a few and see that the packets are put together or something like that. Too much to stay to one area, zero then, add a pound of weight, and sometimes force dumb sets, you know, it happens. And sometimes he's a payment machine, just the way it is.
That's what they do. It's a completely different kind of an audit.
Totally different, so you can't compare it to. I'd like to see an audit sometime when I thought about the business office, the superintendent's school district, everything they do right and see how the debt happens.
And Mr. Lowers, you are absolutely correct. They are two very different types of audits because the external is a sampling, and with the state audit, they look until they find something that's missing. But they had to find something, correct, that was it, but they even invented that.
And they picked this narrow slice, like they did with co-curricular cash collections 10 years ago or whatever they did back.
And from that, then we have a new process.
Exactly. And it's improved, why we do that.
And that one, you can see that straight through the district, like you can see it with the high school student treasurers of the clubs, you know, I have to do this thing because we have to do this, but it's gone all the way through. So the process doesn't improve.
The advisors have done a really good job together. They're very anxious, they watch them. They watch them very closely.
Any other comments or questions on them? Okay, thank you. Moving on to item G, the 2024-2025 budget workshop.
So we're going to continue with our discussion as the budget develops. We still are waiting for some information. You know, it definitely improves in March, you know, we'll get more definitive numbers. And so here's kind of the agenda for today. We'll talk a little bit about what the finance committee discussed. We'll look at per pupil expenditure, we'll look at the tax cap calculation. We'll talk a little bit about what the governor's budget proposal is, and that's one of our concerns, and we'll talk about that. Revenue appropriation projections, and then we'll look at a projected gap as of today. But again, I want to say it's really preliminary. So because we are waiting for, still considerable amount of information. Look at what the capital outlay is for '24, '25, and then the development, you know, of the direction moving forward over the next several weeks. And then we'll look at the calendar and we'll have some discussion with you. So there it is again, values and vision are driving the decisions as we sit down at the table with the teachers, you know, we're generating ideas all throughout the year. And we put a list together of things that we need and try to make the cut, and some of them don't, you know, depending on our circumstances. So again, the budget finance committee continues to meet. We had a meeting on February 5th, and so we did a really good discussion, actually, this Monday about the budget development process and, you know, what the initial tax gap calculation is going to look like. And again, the projected gap, which we'll discuss in greater detail, and then we start to review our stating as well. Next meeting is on March 19th. So here, per pupil expenditure, again, we continue to look at our per pupil expenditure every year. It's just over $16,500. The average year in county is over $18,000, and across New York State, it's about $23,468. So we say that, you know, we're really going to have a great bang for above, spending considerably less than most districts. And, you know, our kids are doing really well. They have great opportunities after they graduate, opportunities at college, workforce are all very positive. So the tax levy limit calculation, you can see, Dwayne develops this slide where, you know, we've been in the past, what it looked like over the last couple of years and where we're headed. This year, right now, the projected limit is 4.26. That does include 1.0 for the facilities project that was pointed on, not this December, last December, but now, last December. So, you know, so when we look at, like, kind of pulling that out, it's like 3.26 related to the budget itself and 1.0 related to the facilities project.
And I have one thing to say on this slide because I didn't have this information at the finance committee meeting. There is an exclusion for ERS this year. When we run the calculation, our maximum cap changes by $4. Just to be, put the role in, let everybody know, it goes up by $4.
So absorbing the entire 2% from the package.
Because it goes up by 4% of the exclusion.
So state aid school runs, again, the governor came out in, so in November it starts, and in January, the governor puts out per state aid projections, which for us is a loss foundation aid of about $180,000. We're not the only school district in the area. It's affected many, and some even more significantly than us. So we met with Senator Galvin and our representatives from the state education department to talk to them about that needs to be adjusted. So in the past, a whole harmless would kick in, so we wouldn't lose foundation aid, we would be at least cut where we were last year. That's really important in terms of our budget process because naturally, every school district, our expenses increases related to contracts and costs and expenses. And so cutting back on our foundation aid is really heading in the opposite direction of what the governor had originally promised. And so the senator is working really hard on our behalf, and there seems to be a strong support in both the assembly and the senate for correcting that process. I don't know how it's going to go, if we're going to get it all back, some of it, but I'm really hopeful that that's going to be a positive turnaround. So that's about $200,000 of the gap that we'll see in just a minute. Again, we'll get more information as we get into through February. And then, Ms. George, anything else?
The only thing I would say is, you know, we, my group all talked in November, and I think the senators in the house, legislators, we're kind of in the same boat as we were in November, what we thought was going to happen. And what happened in January to the governor was a total surprise to everybody, including the senate and the legislators. So it'll, it'll be interesting. I wonder if we'll have an on-time budget from the state on that show.
You know, I met with some people from the state and they said the same thing. They were, I guess they were, I would say they were frustrated because there was no discussion of the cut. Typically, the governor's office will start speaking to the legislature, speaking to other representatives that help us to develop our budgets, and then they put out like a notice or a warning, A, be aware, and you've seen pullbacks, A, it's going to stay the same, you might see an increase. So usually they help us to prepare, and so this was like, they were really blindsided. So, no, the people are quite frustrated by the process.
May I ask, when, so as I was reading from our thing, they said that they're going through the same process as we would go through as far as we'll put this out and then we negotiate different things. So when is their final, like, decision type thing made or supposedly made or?
April 1st.
April, well, April 1st is the goal, as you've heard of. So that's, so last year went late, so we're really hoping that hits April 1st so that we can make some decisions. It's always easier to stay on tight against the end. So hopefully over the next six weeks, we'll see some significant change. Even by the first meeting in March, we should have some additional information that will kind of clarify things, you know, what direction this is looking in to make up with some agreements. And then hopefully the governor will tie it up by April 1st or 11th. Thank you. Yeah, so here we go. The state aid runs, there it is. If you want to look at the dollar change kind of column, and the big one for us is foundation aid. Just as I mentioned in my memo to you, some of the BOCs aids and private excess cost aid, those were anticipated building aid because of our facilities projects that will be forward. There's money coming off the books, so therefore there's less aid coming to us related to that. Same thing with excess cost aid and BOCs because we're using less of those services, so they're coming in under, under the previous budget. But part of that is related to bringing those programs back into in-house, which is, you have better for students, and ultimately, when all of this rolls out, you're probably going to save you some money, too. So that's a nice thing to do.
And the building aid, where you see we're losing it, when we see the expenditure side, part of that is offset by the debt service that we pay. It's not, you don't see it dollar for dollar because there's a few factors that go in you that the debt that, the building aid is related to the debt that's falling off, but we have debt coming out projected. So you see like a minus and a plus. It's confusing, I know.
So proposed revenues, you know, we look at, of course, look at the property tax levy is the local levy, is the greatest source for us. For '24, '25, it's projected to be $27,111,086. It's projected to be twenty-seven million one hundred eleven thousand eighty-six dollars. An increase of one point one million. See a little bit of state aid without building aid, a small reduction there of ninety-six thousand dollars. State building aid, those are those, that's what we saw on the previous slide, the three hundred seventy-three thousand two forty-eight. An increase in sales tax. Sales tax has been coming in really strong over the last several years. We thought we might see a reduction because of potential recession. Getting some good financial news, recession looked like it's going to be held off. You're not spending money. And so sales taxes come in strong. It may even come in stronger than that. George, I agree that may come in stronger. So that's pretty conservative, I guess, right now. Let's see, what else is there? You said we talked about use of appropriated reserves, consideration of two hundred twenty-nine thousand from various reserves, which we'll discuss a little later. And then the appropriated fund balance, moving that from the five, five sixty-eight back to fourteen eighteen was a standard number prior to last year for a number of years. Appropriations, again, when we look at salaries, that's always our biggest number. That's going up by about one point four million. That's related to contractual obligations that also bring employees back. We used to contract for our occupational therapy service, those all those services come back into us. Also specialized related services because we gave them one class back in. Small okay, but just outside, we're bringing it back into, into the school. So that's also part of that. You can see fringe benefits is about four hundred thousand dollars. You can see a nice savings. And BOSI's, again, that's related on the other side to, I mean, those services that we needed. So you can see how it goes back and forth. It's not an exact science either. One of the biggest issues that we're facing is in transportation. So talked with our transportation about extending our contract. Our student has informed us that they're not able to do that because basically for this entire year, they've been kind of running in red. Their expenses are exceeding what they're taking in from the school district and the garrets to our contract. So they're saying that it looks like it could be about twenty-five percent, somewhere between twenty and twenty-five percent increase. And that four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars represents that number. And so that's a significant piece of the gap that we'll see in just a moment because that was unanticipated. And so it's just as we go through the process of renewal, sitting down and talking about the contract that came up. So we'll probably go out to RFP, get some other people into the process to see what kind of numbers we can come up with. And we're really hoping that they're going to be able to tighten that number up and bring it down somewhat, you know, closer to twenty or fifteen percent. We'll see how it goes. So the proposed budget currently is forty-three million eight hundred two thousand seven hundred sixty-two dollars. The increase is one, one million five hundred twenty-two thousand six, sixty-eight for a three, three point four percent increase for a total of, let me see, what's one of those? Forty-five million, three hundred twenty-five thousand four thirty. And we can see the projected revenues are forty-four million five eighty-two four thirteen, which leads us to a gap of seven hundred forty-three thousand seventeen thousand percent. So that seven forty, seven forty-three is related basically to two things, with the transportation adjustment and about the two hundred thousand dollars we lost from our foundation. So we're going to see how those things unfold over the next several weeks. We're going to be working on putting the RFP out so we can get those numbers on transportation. See if we can type that up. Really hopeful that the state's going to come through for us and the senate and somebody will come through for us and straighten that mess out. And so we're going to continue to work on the seven forty-three over the next four to six weeks. So the capital outlay, again, so here we are talking about, we just mentioned earlier that the basic work is, restoration is really necessary. There's considerable amount, but there's some that needs to be taken sooner, taken care of sooner than later. So then for a hundred thousand dollars, it doesn't go very far, but we're going to take it in phases. And we'll see if the project ever does move from one hundred to two hundred fifty thousand. That will help. So we'll probably end up doing this over the next couple of years just to restore as much of the break as we possibly can. So high level budget development direction from the board. So here we want to talk about like staying within the, this is just things to talk and think about as we're discussing. Stay within the calculated tax gap. Build the appropriation budget, expecting not to spend more than ninety-seven to ninety-eight and a half percent. Build the revenue budget to within one hundred one percent expectation revenues. Maintain six sections, maintain building level substitutes. Expectation, expectations for surplus as we approach June thirty. What the expectations are for funding and using reserves. The expectations for saving for funding, the capital reserve and the appropriated fund balance. Are we going to move from five sixty-eight back down to four eighty? And those are just some thoughts, you know, to discuss any of those things. Whatever is important to the board, we can discuss. But just want to throw some things to think about. And here's, here's the rest of the calendar. So we're going to submit the calculation for the tax levy limit on March first. We'll meet again here on March sixth. We have our finance committee meeting on the nineteenth and then we meet again on the twentieth. And then we have some more budget workshops, but then it tightens up pretty quickly after that. And you can see we vote on May twenty-first with everyone else in the, in the state. So there we are.
Questions, comments?
I have observations, but I have a question. I had several questions.
Questions, comments, observations?
This is all in the present, but I say that looking at the tax gap, I'm getting around, sorry, gap of seven hundred thousand, which I'm not concerned about right now. I think it's manageable. I think we have some options to address that. Would you think if you look at this budget and compare it to the growth from twenty-two, twenty-three that the year we're in and then twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, it is significantly less growth, which is good. That's been kind of a concern of appropriations going up and having revenues to offset that. Revenues are what they are right now. I think there's going to be plenty of opportunities to address that gap right now. When you take a look at this budget, the, you got all contractual obligations, again, tentative, but they're all in the budget. Move the various expenses from the COVID relief grants, the general fund, the tax gap calculation, and then the foundation reduction. When you take those things and put them in place, you've got a tax gap or a gap of seven hundred thousand. It's manageable and we have some options with appropriating more fund balance. Certainly, there's going to be an expectation of state aid is going to move it some. I mean, I believe that. And there's still might be some appropriation adjustments, superintendent, transportation, fringe benefits. So I think there's opportunities there just within the strength of our finances right now to offset that seven hundred thousand. If not, I think we'll roll up our sleeves and we've got several weeks to do that. Maybe that's what I originally was talking about. Salaries went up from twenty-three, twenty-four, one million five hundred nineteen thousand. Even moving COVID salaries over to twenty-four, twenty-five, you look at salaries increasing one million three hundred ninety-six. So it's a lesser number in the increase. And those things are really important. Maybe look at fringe benefits, for example. The fringe benefits last year, I say last year, moving into twenty-three, twenty-four, went up six hundred and thirty-four thousand. And fringe benefits under the current plan, again, proposed three hundred ninety thousand. So that's lagging quite a bit down too. So those kind of things help pay for areas that have gone up significantly, whether it is transportation, you know, whether it's not. And the, I just think the way this is put together, I think one thing we need to keep in mind, the superintendent touched on it, is we asked for this information early, we got it early. And your compliment earlier, the staff committee was writing out, it was perfect, Dan. And but we also know, as we look at these numbers, we might come back to our next meeting and say, you know, transportation, for example, may have changed, or fringe benefits, one way or the other. But if they're a little bit less and these numbers are conservative, it's going to bite into that, to the seven hundred some thousand you need to deal with. Again, you turn that state aid, state aid number around a little bit, you know, you get two hundred to the plus, you know, that's a three hundred thousand dollar swing. And I know we're very careful with incorporating fund balance. One thing I think we can at least talk about and maybe something that we may not do. But if there is a significant increase in transportation, the aid's going to come in the next year. If one option we have, the fund balance, the price is going to be strong. Information that Mr. Manbretti laid out, I think is also conservative. We look at the sales tax revenue and the other revenue in those areas, I think those are going to be strong. At least the trends that I'm looking at financially. And it may not be, these numbers are good. I think the conservative part is good. I think there's going to be enough fund balance. But if we increase the appropriated fund balance, offset at least the state's share of the increase in transportation. And then next year, pull that appropriation fund balance back because the transaid will come in to offset that. What it, what it does, it doesn't give you the opportunity to take advantage of that increased transportation aid next year. So if it's four hundred thousand and the aid is over sixty percent, so two thirds of that's going to come back and stay in next year. If we appropriate fund balance that year, that will significantly close the gap. And then next year, pull that back because aid is going to be there. So I mean, I just think there's some opportunities there. I think when you first see the number, that'd be shocking. I'm, the static's not the right word. I am really pleased that it is that number. Because when you start running comparisons from last year, moving salaries over, you start getting into two or three times more than that, seven hundred thousand. So it's just well done. I think that all the information we have is valuable to us. So that's all the question, I just kind of, it was a little bit redundant, I just wanted to say it. So I think.
Thank you. The big observation is well made. Other comments or questions at this point?
I agree with everything Paul has said. They, the, we have to think about that transportation increase, at least one third of it approximately, as being a one-time expense. Because, because if you, if you have to cover the entire round for first year, the second year, you don't. You don't have to cover a third. And so the, the, so, so the, so it's a perfect use for excess fund balance to get you through that first year till the aid starts coming in on that particular thing. And if that's what we have to do to make the transportation system viable, that's what we have to do. You know, it's costly doing this. But I, I think the, this report is, is very, very optimistic. I think the, the information that we received has been received early. And so we'll be able to discuss this list of concerns that the superintendent had on the board here a minute ago. And we'll be able to address this gap efficiently. And I, I'm looking forward to having a great budget season. I think it's, it's better than I could hope for. Especially because I was worried about the sustainability of some of those hires that we, that we, you know, each, each month I'd see a new hire and I'd, you know, this is something we can afford, you know. And, and so I think what this shows is that yes, indeed, we planned for being able to afford. So we didn't bring in a counselor or a social worker or whatever with some, without some good plan to be able to sustain that position, which is, which is good. So I, I'm enthusiastic about the budget.
Some people look forward to summer, some people look forward to budget season. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
I'm a summer guy.
After budget season, yeah. Other questions or comments?
I was very happy to see that our, so Paul mentioned that all of our COVID hires, we are, we can sustain them with this upcoming year, unfortunately, it's not huge.
The only piece that's out there is the, 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 and we talked about that because again, as Mr. George did, I agree, I think she's done a great job being able to move them over slowly over the period so that it's sustainable and didn't have any kind of catastrophic impact. And, you know, because we need those people, you know, a lot of it is response or our kids needs, you know, what could be going on with recent COVID, mental health counseling is, is double, tripled, you know, over the last five years for sure. And so, you know, what we did get, the results of our student survey, the value of these, and it was very, very positive. Our students telling us that they feel good, they enjoy being here, and they feel supported. So that's all because of those things that we've done. So we go, that's what we're here for, right? Is to take care of our kids and give them the best experience possible. And she did a great job being able to sustain those important positions. One thing I know from a building perspective, those subs are really important. So we're still talking about how can we make that work? So that will be part of this budget process as things happen flow. You know, we like to pull one, two, three back if possible. I don't think three is going to be possible, but honestly, but we're going to try to do something to provide them with some relief because having the building base subs is, and I can't even explain it, like how they use them, they move them all over the place to cover open, you know, open classrooms as people need to call in for various reasons. And so, you know, we're hoping to do something with that as well, but yeah.
So you're saying that would be one, one of the higher priorities with regard to any restoration that needed to be done?
We'll be sharing that with you, like our priority list. You know, probably next month, you know, on the sixth, we'll probably share the priority list with you. Because we've been working on that, we've got a solid priority, we kind of have a tentative draft form of what we're thinking. And so there's a number of things, some of the things we have to do, you know, like that we just have to do well to make sure that things are running accordingly. But then the, the subs are definitely at, near the top of us.
Yeah, I think as you're ready to share, it would be good to include it so we can see what's, we can continue our future planning, what we're looking at, including this year and what we hope to include in future years. And especially as we did the invitation process and all that, it all results. We've heard some of the requests directly and it's good to see where they land in the planning table.
Are we going to go through that list of where you want a high level guidance with regard to?
Do we want to go back to that slide?
I don't know. I, I don't know whether to do that.
I think, oh, the list of questions. Are there any in the board would like to comment or have questions on at this point?
Well, we could just go down the list and have just a quick bullet on each one. For instance, to stay within the calculated tax gap, that is something that this budget that we just looked at does do. You know, so, and I would say from my point of view, I, I think we want to do that. But if there are other board members who think differently, we should be able to try to.
Certainly, I think since we've seen what the gap is and we can sense whether or not it's reasonable, we may not have much conversation about whether or not we can stay within the tax gap. But if anyone has other thoughts, it's lovely to see a gap that is manageable.
Right, it's just so preliminary also, you know, we're talking about these things, so it's, you know, but that's.
But it's good to know that we feel like we can do that, you know, and we want to do that.
Right.
The, the second one, the ninety-seven to ninety-eight and a half percent of the appropriations, that, that is what determines the, the fund balance at the end, that in conjunction with the excess revenues. So the, you, you thought it might be more than that, Paul, with regard to the amount of excess we would have this year that might be appropriated.
I was just basing that on the December report.
Yeah.
There's a couple of appropriation line items right now, they have unencumbered, that are significant amount. Whether that holds throughout the year, I don't know. Just looking at that number, if it does hold, and then you get into interest earnings and sales tax, yes, I think, I think it'll be even a better picture than this. But that, but again, there's six months more of finance that we have to look at, but as of December, it's strong.
Well, last year, you all recall that the, that the appropriation budget was expended to within one percent of the amount. So instead of ninety-eight point five, it was more like ninety-nine percent. So the, I mean, years ago, we, we used to try to, we used to try to have a couple of hundred thousand on the expenditure side and a couple of hundred thousand on the, on the revenue side. And that came together to be about four hundred thousand dollars, which replaced the appropriate fund balance. That was kind of a rule of thumb for many years in this district. So the, the budget that you built here, this one we just saw, is, expends most of that appropriate one, appropriation line, if that's, if that's the guidance that you're using. In other words, in other words, the, the expenditures that you, that you outlined on the chart with appropriations would bring us up to at least ninety-seven percent of the budget. Is that it?
Between ninety-seven and ninety-eight, yes. You know, I built in the appropriated fund balance as that cushion, like I've done.
Between 97 and 98, yes. You know, I built in the appropriated fund balance as that cushion like I've done for many years. So it doesn't always.
No, it's just an approximation.
But you try.
And I think too, because you know, our, like we said, we, our appropriations, you know, it's like, like right around 99, 99.2. And so that's getting really close and tight. So it's the idea of just kind of remembering, starting to bring that back and tighten that process up. Same thing for revenue, you know, the expectation receiving about 101%, you know, because people underestimate what we're going to receive naturally, but just again, keeping that kind of tight so that it just paints a better financial picture. If, if possible, and it, it may not be, because things have, like the last couple of years, things have happened and we have to go to that. It's just the idea of like, you know, commonly we end up there.
The revenue side, whatever happens, happens on the revenue side. We can't control most of that. It's, it comes in, then maybe it comes in more than we expect, or maybe it comes in less than we expect. But on the appropriation side, how we spend that budget, we do control. And one of the first things they told me when I was a brand-new school board member was, don't spend more than the taxpayers voted for, not even $1 more, you know? And, and so then what this tells us is that, you know, we're being, we're, we're being conservative and we have to watch that like we do every month. We have to watch those expenditure lines to make sure we don't exceed 100% on that one. On the revenue side, it takes care of itself. It goes over and fine.
Right. And to address the interest, it's kind of an interesting phenomenon also. Similar to the sales tax phenomenon that's happening on, last year at this time, when I was projecting for interest earnings, they said by October of this year, those interest earnings are going to fall off. That has not happened. I have feelers out there to try to get a feel of what people way smarter than me think is going to happen with interest earnings from following year. So I hope I'm going to get information back to make a stronger decision on what to budget there for next year.
Yeah, yeah, I understand what you're saying. I think, I think you're very conservative here. And I think that's right where it belongs, as to the interest earnings, I do. I think it's all along, it's all thought out. At least that's what I think.
But if I can squeeze a little bit more and help close that gap. I know. I don't want to back myself into a corner either.
No, I understand. I do. I understand. That'd be a good discussion, but we've still got to look at 25, 26 at that as well. But the, managed to put money into reserves from the previous year's budget and we are under the tax cap. This year, I think we'll have to be in a position to, when we get down to the one dot, you know, what are we going to do with funding reserves or fund balance? We do think the approach, we want to offset some of the transportation quickly. I'm not pushing that. But if we do, now it affects how much can go into reserves. So those kind of decisions don't matter. But still, if it turns out that we're in a decent way, the trends are going to be two years under the tax cap and two years the funds were strong enough where we could put money in reserves for interest issue that's been hit this year. But certainly I wouldn't necessarily recommend it now, especially with the state aid coming out, what they're talking about. Now, I certainly wouldn't go, recommend going under the tax cap at this point, because that'd be too dangerous.
Does anyone have any other thoughts on that one?
Well, and on the reserves issue, I, you know, I, I would think that we, you know, we've been putting money into reserves each year. And I know we don't have as many reserves as some districts have. But I think this might be a good year to not be planning to put a whole lot of more money into reserves. First of all, you projected we were going to take some money out of reserves as part of the, as part of the revenues. But I think the, I'd rather see the, any excess fund balance from this year we use to help offset this gap that we have and do this transportation issue and, and whatever the state throws at us with regard to foundation aid, rather than trying to build reserves for the future. Although I think it's important to build reserves for the future. This is not a year to do it, I don't think.
I think it's important when you have the money to be able to.
Yeah, it's just, sure, sure.
Needs, needs to be high on the priority list when it doesn't come at the expense of something else. Even though the part of our struggles during the gap elimination adjustment years were that our reserves were not as well funded as other districts, and that's why we were on fiscal distress, because we got hit hard fast. Again, we don't need to cut everything to fund reserves. That doesn't do us any good either.
Well, that takes us to this, this one on the six sections per grade level. You know, because that's getting right to the kids and teachers and, and I'm in favor. I mean, we talked about the several good reasons for having six sections in each grade level. I hate to back off on that. So this budget that you presented tonight includes six sections in each grade level.
Has no cuts in it and includes all the stimulus positions except for the three of the other levels.
I believe, let me ask the board, are we all in support of maintaining those six sections? That is a priority?
I think those priorities are on your, because that's such a priority for all the teachers.
Well, it's important to bring it up again and again because there's, people might say, well, you have declined enrollment in fourth grade. Why are you, why are you still doing six? You could probably get by with five sections. There were good reasons why we chose to stabilize the, the classrooms in each grade level. So I don't want to abandon that.
Stability and continuity are very important.
And we heard correctly from the teachers on our, on our visits, how beneficial this is.
Thank you. And then we've heard about the building level substitutes. Expectations for surpluses, if any?
Well, it's kind of all the reserve piece, all of the kind of levels are kind of connected at the bottom. Like if there's surpluses at the end, what do we do with it? Do we fund reserves? Do we use reserves? You know, and we've had some comments on that. Same thing for the capital reserve is another one. We've taken a lot of money out to su, to support this project. We need to start rebuilding it for the next project that's down the road. So that's another piece. And then just the appropriate fund balance. You know, we said, you know, we lifted that up a little bit with the idea that we're going to go back to 418. Can we do that or not? You know, it depends on how the number, you know, we need to look at or somewhere in between. You know, maybe we'll end up at five, but in fact, I don't know. Just throwing it out there. But it just takes to think about, you know, as we're going through the process of approaching the end of the school year, you know, where's, where's the money?
But the one thing that's on that final few items of that changes the way we operate is the loss of the building substitutes. So, so you know, that one, I think deserves some discussion, maybe in more depth than we can do tonight. As we look in more detail with regard to the budget, as, as we find more information coming along, we need to talk about whether we believe those positions were, were important. And if we do, how can there's a key?
I think that priority list in the future presentation with that on the list will be very helpful.
So the priority list you're preparing has, has additional thoughts for, for more staffing or?
No, not necessarily for more staffing, but for various projects and programs, supplies, furniture. So those types of things. There's not really a whole lot of new staffing.
Yes, yes.
It's that, yeah.
The, the thing that we see every year and the, but you know, it's like, do we buy the truck or not buy the truck? What can we afford?
Yeah, yeah. And so you, you have it as one of your draft documents?
Yeah, I, I, fine. Yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about.
And again, it's, it's a work in progress. We're talking about professional development. There's all, all kinds of things. And, and that's generated at the, yeah, that's it. And that, those ideas are generated at the administrative cabinet level based on the needs of the buildings and departments. And then we kind of say, which are our top priorities, you know, which we can come next and those types of things. And some of it has been added into this budget. Some of those priorities have, and then there's a number of that have not.
Yeah, and most of them have not. So.
So now having, having the board review the very preliminary budget and you get a sense from the board of the support for what's there, it gives you more information to go back and look at the priority list.
If this then that. Through our school board visitations, there were some comments, concerns about space. Is there any plan to open up more space in some areas?
Well, we're kind of out of space. And that's, that's the problem. We are doing some movement. It's hard to move the students around into, into more appropriate spaces for our smaller kids. Because, you know, adding, adding pre-K is fantastic. We have a great pre-K program. It's actually wonderful. But it, it is consumed almost everything else we have there. And then getting that into the right space, because they're so small and you're just getting started, moving that kindergarten into another appropriate space. And so moving people around has been a top priority. We just kind of finalized that today, what it's going to look like for next year. And so we'll be working on that. And then the next project will be, I think, adjusting space and, and actually probably the reconstruction of the old wing apartment. Because the, the working spaces are not able to consider modern classroom spaces, especially for small children. They, they need space to move, get groupings, all kinds of things that the teachers did throughout the day to individualize their instruction, kind of center-based type activities going on. So there's a lot of that. Also, a playground needs to be, well, a playground in and of itself probably needs to be replaced. Students, it's really all in needs serving. It's perfect. It's always inspected and we go through that whole process. The playground itself is very old, needs to be replaced, and we also have to make it more appropriate for our young students. Because right now, it really doesn't serve their needs. And that's part of what the PTO is working on, not only those internal activities, but they're also looking at some activities that could happen outside prior to having that playground space available to them. And then the PTO at Parkdale is also considering doing different stages and helping us to start with a small space for our pre-day. And they will do the fundraising for that. But that's, that is some preliminary discussions. And so it takes a lot of planning to start here to get to this.
So we're going to still rent parts of classrooms out?
Yes, we do. We have a few rentals, absolutely. Yes, yeah, we do have a few rentals. Yes, we do.
So that we're going to keep doing that.
Yes, we will. Yeah, we still have a few rentals and we have full tab. But again, in a relationship with OSCE, we've sent, many of our, most of our students have left. And Hollander was able to pick them up. So that was really fortunate that they just needed to move kind of down the street. But in talking with Superintendent O'Rourke from OSCE about like, you know, what's our commitment? And so I'm trying to say that all schools share in that commitment because we need, we need places for specialized programming. You know, our kids participate in some of those classrooms, you know? And so it's kind of a shared responsibility for all the component districts of areas here. So I'm trying not to back off, but I may need to, but not for next year. We're going to hold the study for next year.
Well, what, Terry, what, I was at those, those meetings and I remember some concern about space, but what kind of space? I mean, did they want additional classrooms? Because we've got six, six classes at each grade level and there's a room for each of those.
Well, the backstage, for instance, at Parkdale, is one of the things that was mentioned by some of the teachers in certain grades, that the backstage is now being used for other classes and they can't use it. And some of the specials can't use certain rooms anymore. So that was a big issue for the teachers.
And related services for occupational therapy, especially physical therapy, they need greater space for a particular type of swing. And so those things are really tight. You know, those spaces are really, really narrow. Even like delivering instruction, first readings, after reading, things like that. There's just not a lot of space for those kids they need to do. Yeah, so it's certainly not, I think.
So that's it. Dan, that was, that was your?
Yeah, and it's, obviously, the, the next building project, which will be 10 years from now, whenever, whenever it's my work, correct, can address big things like, like you talked, you know? Because by then, we will have retired a whole lot of debt. But, but short-term solutions are probably what need to be explored to bridge that gap.
That's more work than right. Like the classroom movement is always difficult and not our first choice. It really seems to be the best choice for our students because a lot of it is just because of the restroom facilities and the needs of students.
Well, that's sort of what we're talking about with the pre-K and kindergarten.
Any other comments or questions?
Yes, another question. So our next budget workshop as a board is March 6. Is superintendent directing the information we need on the Mayless State Aid updates on the revenue side? Who will we be looking for at that meeting here? Because we don't have a budget finance committee until the 19th. So as far as direction of that, do you have a plan to have?
If the board could please send your ideas to Jess. Jess can let me know collectively what you're looking for for March 6.
Well, it's all according. That's fine. I just.
Or if you have any ideas now that you were going to provide direction, I'd like to see the priority list under that meeting.
I wrote that one down already. I'll update the tax cap by $4.
Please do. Yes, right away. Does anyone have any, you're welcome to send requests to me and I'll send them to Ms. George, absolutely. Does anyone have any other thoughts, things like that?
Well, the, I mean, certainly an update on whatever new information comes along with regard to revenues or expenditures and its effect on the gap. And then some discussion of these, what the board's feelings might be regarding some of these issues like the substitute, the building subs or?
To award the Phase 1 roofing contract to Greve Metal and Roofing as detailed in your agenda. Move by Ms. Stilwiler. Second in by Mr. Brunson. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions carried 7-0. Item I, may I have a motion to approve the resolution to award the contract for design finishes and countertops to major, oh, carpentry contract. There we go. Carpentry contract to major construction as detailed in your agenda. Move by Ms. Stilwiler. Second in by Mr. Brunson. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions carried 7-0. Item J, may I have a motion to approve the resolution to award the Phase 1 plumbing contract to D.B. Brown and Associates as detailed in your agenda? Move by Ms. Stilwiler. Second in by Mr. Brunson. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions carried 7-0. Item K, may I have a motion to approve the resolution to award the HVAC contract to Mollenberg Frats as detailed in your agenda? Move by Ms. Stilwiler. Second in by Mr. Brunson. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions carried 7-0. Item L, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the resolution to award the electrical contract for Phase 1 to private electric construction. May I have a motion? Move by Ms. Stilwiler. Second in by Mr. Brunson. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions carried 7-0. On to item 22, other, good job team. Item A, the B smart finish. May I have a motion to approve the resolution regarding gun safety and awareness as detailed in your agenda? Move by Mr. Blatt. Second in by Mr. Cassidy. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions carried 7-0. Item B, may I have a motion to approve the prize calendar as detailed in your agenda? Move by Ms. Stilwiler. Second. You're almost there. Second in by Mr. Brunson. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions carried 7-0. Item 23, is there any new business to come before the board? Item 24, there's your list of meeting dates, folks. Let's all show up.
Can I just point out, well, speaking of showing up, can I just point out that April meeting is the one I'm concerned because I will be out of town that week for work. And we, what's that? No, the April meeting. We, we talked about this when setting this and so if we can see, I've confirmed that I will in fact be out of town.
Out of town on April 24th. I am in town on April 24th. Are you in town on April 10?
I have no idea.
I am not. It's showing a curve. I'm not in town. I am now in town on April 10.
One of those days in there in April is when we have to vote on the, on the budget, which I, I don't have that calendar in front of me.
No, isn't it?
No, I thought it was for that 24th.
24.
It has to be approved by the 24th. That's my recollection.
So Terry and I are both out on April 10.
I am here on April 10. Yeah, it's the 24th day.
That's when we would take the official adoption.
On the 24th?
So, normally, we would reach an agreement as a board on a number the previous meeting. Now, that doesn't always work that way. So, last year, I don't think we could pull that off. I think we ended up having to finalize it on the, but the preferred way to do it would be for us to reach an agreement on a number Aprils. Yes, what, is it the 10th? Yeah, the 16th is just that short meeting.
Isn't that a morning one?
Yes.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, so, the preferred time to reach a final number is April 10 then, and then you vote on it on the 24th. But you don't have to. You could reach the number on the 24th as well. So, and apparently, we're going to have people missing both those days.
We're waiting for missing one on the 24th and two on the 10th.
Yeah, we had the 20th, March 20th. Sent a email on that.
Yes, you did. Thank you very much. I'm sorry. Thank you for the information. We all need to have lives. I think in the focus of board perpetuation, we need to normalize people having lives outside of board service. So, I think this, we can do this.
Well, as long as we have five people here, you know, and as long as the person who 's absent feels good about our input, they've been able to provide.
Yes. So, I am sure that the superintendent will make sure that we all have all of the information, and that we can provide feedback to each other. In my absence, I'm sure Joe can take feedback and vice versa. So, please run it off for me, and it certainly reach out to the superintendent if you are unable to attend a meeting and have any questions. Does that work? All right.
I actually had, can we skip back to, not necessarily in business, but from the next, our next, is that where I put in business, for next time?
Sure.
So, one of the questions actually was a question, just, does this, does this, what's happening at Ormsby, does any of this go into the Challenger? I just think this is amazing. And having had a child who's gone to Ormsby, I would love to know more of that more even once.
The local point of information that the superintendent just heard, and he can decide if that's something that can be done.
Okay, great. I mean, maybe not this particular one, but at some point.
Yeah, no, I think that's a.
The native you.
Yeah, shared feedback is all.
So, I really enjoyed talking about that. And then, my other question was, there was some discussion about possibly seeing if it's possible to do another hands-on CPR course this spring. I know a lot of, there's been some discussion on that, and we had such amazing turnout from the community, even people who didn't have children in the community. So, I was hoping if we could add that to our next.
Yeah, Mr. Stilwiler and I talked about it. He's got some new equipment, new foundation grant, I don't think that they helped us. Yeah, so, new equipment, and so, yeah, we can, yeah, we can talk about pulling together the training.
Great. Anything else, folks? Item 25, no executive session. Item 26A, may I have a motion to adjourn? Seconded by Mr. Cassidy. Discussion. All in favor?
Let's talk about it.
Opposed, abstentions carried 7-0. Oh, sorry, we're.